Our organization understands that and we have strategically had conversations with the city about looking at different ways that we could invest those dollars. And the data and the strategy that we have taken has led our efforts thus far. Now, could tourism dollars be used for tourism-related facilities? Yes. It would, you know, those facilities would have to be proven to be servicing 51% or more services for tourists. Those laws are set to protect the tourism stakeholder businesses that they are set up to support with economic development. But if the city wanted to look into that, we would hope that they would take the data-driven strategic time that they did when forming our organization to have those conversations. Right now, it's my board and our position that the plan that we've set forth is the best use of those funds strategically for the biggest economic impact. So, the more money that we, you know, the better that we're doing. Creates more revenue for the city through this stream is our stance. So, that would be my statement response.
Can I ask some follow-up questions to Sal's? The first thing I have to say is actually a question. It's a little bit of a clarifying statement just because when the TLT was enacted initially, those dollars were administered into the community through grants. So, it wasn't, it hasn't actually always been, those dollars haven't always been used for our DMO, for Visit McMinnville.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
And so, what happened was, that was before my time, but as I understand, tourism stakeholders got together in conjunction with the city, did extensive research on models to, you know, vast practices to execute and implement a plan and use of those dollars. At that time, it was settled on the grant program quickly, and they can, they're sitting over there, they can speak better to this than I. But it proved to be not the most efficient and effective investment for those funds as there's only a small, there's a finite amount of nonprofits that are tourism-based. So, they said, you know, let's look at another model that could be impactful. They went around the state through different organizations and modeled ours after a very successful model.
I recall that transitional time. I don't know that we have the kind of data that you're able to provide us with, but certainly the feedback that we got on council is that administering those grants was only maybe a fraction as effective as the work that you've done as a DMO. So, the other thing that struck me, Sal, I heard you say two other things that I want to address. One was capital improvements at the airport and the other was convention center space. So, as soon as these dollars started flowing into the city and we had some other needs and certainly some of the committees I was sitting on, I had some other needs. And I remember reaching out to you about potential use of TLT funds for some other things. I think at the time, I was interested in some sort of public toilet facility or something like that. And you sent me the TLT definitions, you know, as defined in 320.300 through 320.350. And very kindly, you went through and highlighted for me at the time, all of the definitions for allowable facilities for TLT dollars. And I saved that document. So, I was able to pull that up. And so, the first thing that struck me, Sal, when I heard you say capital improvements at the airport, I do believe that we, you know, our airport is in need of a lot, but I don't believe that capital improvements at our airport would actually be something that would be allowable with TLT dollars. And I think the main reason for that really is almost unrelated to the TLT dollars as it is to the current use of the airport, which is the, we don't have really tourism-related activities at our airport. Not currently, we don't have any small flights that can come in. We can't, I couldn't hear you, but we can't bring in Horizon Air or any group like that. Not that that would be a bad thing for the city of McMinnville, but where it currently isn't accurate. And for these TLT dollars to be used for any sort of other capital improvement, whether it were the airport or the convention center that you mentioned, then a certain amount of those dollars, or a certain amount of that activity then has to be tourism-related activity. And Jeff, could you expand on that?
That's my understanding, yeah. So, any tourism-related promotional dollars to fund tourism infrastructure, from my understanding, you know, has to serve 51% or more tourists. There are, the city of Bend last year went through a situation where they were arguing that their roads were being used heavily by the impact of tourism. They withheld $300,000 of Visit Bend's funding and they were sued by the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association and ended up winning in that type of a situation. So, yes, we can fund tourism-related infrastructure projects. I would say we would be the first people to be excited about talking about that. I don't think that that times now. I see that being something that's going to happen in the future, but we would love to be part of that strategy. We went and invested in a convention center, conference center feasibility study, and through that process, we found out, yes, you guys are competitive. And where, you know, your competitive edge is building, you know, a, I think it was a 40,000 square foot facility. It's bigger than this facility in Salem. Now, conceptually, that's not complimentary to the destination that we have. It would hurt the leisure business we have, in our opinion, and the, you know, the data that we did, because it would be servicing business travelers at the same time we're trying to fill the small amount of hotels that we have with leisure travelers. So, I think there's a time for that discussion and I'm, I think that you, it is up to the city council to decide whether, when that time is. And I would hope that when we have those conversations, that as partners with the city, you would allow us to share the time and the work and the thought and the strategy of why we haven't gone into infrastructure investments for tourism. But again, we are here to create economic development, so.
I'd like to respond to Remy's comment to me.
Before that, I'd like to have Wendy.
Remy made a direct comment to me that I'd like to respond to.
That's okay, that was, sorry. Okay.
So, the reference that you made to a requirement of 51% activities being tied to tourism is actually not addressed in the statute. There's no reference to that in the statute, but what is referenced is that conference centers, convention centers, and other tourism-related facilities. And then this specifically defines a conference center, convention center, or visitor information center, and other improved real property that has a useful life of 10 or more years and has the substantial purpose of supporting tourism or accommodating tourist activities. I have a really difficult time believing that an airport doesn't fit that description. But even if we thought that the current majority use of the airport didn't fit that description, it seems to me that if we were to have a large event, for example, this summer at the airport, that that is most definitely a tourism-related activity. So, I actually disagree with you, Jeff. I think the time to talk about this is now. We have a $3 million budget shortfall in the city's budget. Addressing that shortfall has to be a priority. Also, thinking in terms of long-term capacity and improving long-term capacity for visiting the city, I just, you know, again, I really appreciate your work, but I just have a hard time justifying $400,000 in, you know, paid marketing. That's exclusive of your staff.
You have a marketing organization.
No, I understand, I understand, but as a city, it's just difficult for me to justify that kind of allocation in the budget environment that we're in, given the other pressing needs that we have. So, that's my.
I hear that. And I, you know. To that, I would say we're operating within the laws and the agreement that we have the city and the laws as they stand, so I don't know what else to say.
Okay. I think unless anyone else has any comments, I think we, I'd like to kind of wrap this up around what our contract actually is with Visit McMinnville currently. And I think David could enlighten us briefly before we close out this topic.
On the topic of the contract.
Yeah.
On the topic of the contract. Sorry. So, I don't have the contract in front of me, Jeff. I'm sure you're familiar with it, so you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that we're currently in the, we're beyond the initial term of the contract. We're in a period of one-year extensions.
Yes.
Under the contract.
That's right.
And that, in order for either party to terminate the contract, notice would have to be given by January 1st for the upcoming fiscal year. So, because neither the city nor Visit McMinnville gave the other notice prior to January 1st of 2019, we're locked into that contract for the second one-year extension period, I think, starting July 1st going, this year, going through June 30th, 2020.
That is what I understand, yes.
And so, then there's one more extension under that contract that if neither party gives notice by January 1st, 2020, that third and final one-year extension goes into effect and would carry the contract to its termination June 30th, 2021.
That is what I understand, yes.
So, my, I guess my comment to the council is that because notice was not given by January 1st, 2019, we are locked into the contract with Visit McMinnville, as written, for the upcoming fiscal year. Any discussion regarding changes to that contract or amendments to the contract, while certainly both parties at any time can mutually agree to amend a contract, the city can't force a change to the contract prior to the 2020, 2021 fiscal year and could only do that by giving notice by January 1st, 2020.
Correct.
Thank you, Jeff.
You do know the contract.
Thank you, David. All I can say is it's a pleasure to work with this group and be part of their committee and I, they do incredible work. And I think they're doing an incredible job to what we're trying to accomplish here in McMinnville, building economic development and bringing people to our beautiful place.
I would welcome any of you to, for, I'm happy to download on, I have so much to share. So, thanks for your leadership. I know you're extremely busy, but I am one of the biggest champions for our town and I want to make sure that everyone has a clear understanding of how we're operating, that we're operating to the best of our ability and that we're doing so transparently in partnership with you. That being said, for us to leave here today, we technically need to have a vote on our plan.
Oh, okay.
For us to be able to move forward.
So, you've had the presentation. Could I have a motion?
I'm going to approve the, budget is submitted.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. So, Remy made the motion and Adam seconded it. Okay, all in favor?
Can we discuss, let's discuss the motion.
Okay.
So, I guess, can you clarify what I'm, what I'm, in light of David's highlight of how the contract works, what are we approving?
We're approving their business plan for the year and their budget.
Okay.
Which was in the report.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, so, my comment is that last year, I raised the same issues with Visit McMinnville and my belief that we need to consider using, you know, different uses for this money. And I was told at that time that because it was a multi-year contract, we couldn't revisit it this year. So, I feel like I was given bad information at that time. And I would say that going forward, between now and January, I would like to have the conversation on the council about the transient lodging tax and how we're allocating it going forward, because I do think that there is, as much as I value the work, I think there are other priorities that should be considered that are currently not being considered for those allocations.
Okay, well, the city staff has heard and I'm sure they will take it under advisement.
So, then Sal doesn't feel like an outlier. I would too like to, moving forward as we come open, on new terms of a contract, look at reassessing the 70% and the 30% and putting, not defining right now, not changing that ratio, not defining now what the tourism-related facility is, but having a discussion on what we can identify as a tourism-related facility and saving money towards that, which I understand is a potential possibility also, and taking some 30% for just in the general fund and earmarking it for something in particular, potentially affordable housing or interesting projects there.
Comment on that.
So, part of what the Budget Committee asked for in the context of a multi-year financial plan to rebuild the reserves was an exploration of the use of the 30% that currently goes to the general fund. So, that'll be, that will be part of the project that we work on over the next several months and a series of presentations and work sessions with the city council. If the city council wants to direct a formal discussion with Visit McMinnville and other partners about alternative uses and priorities for the 70% that's committed to tourism-related expenditures by the statute, I think the council needs to give us some direction on that.
I feel like with a lot of the conversation that's happened here, there might be not enough understanding of cans and cans. And I say that from my place of limited understanding of cans and cans. And so, I would say before diving into reevaluate a contract or anything like that, that perhaps the council just needs to have a clear understanding, not only of how the TLT dollars work, but also any other talking points that have come up about potential uses, about also the restrictions of any of those potential facilities.
We could certainly schedule a work session to have that conversation with the council. That would be, that would be something we could definitely work into the work session calendar.
Okay, with that provision, Adam, do you have other comments?
I just wanted to say on the record, I wanted to second what Zach said in that through what the Budget Committee already asked for and what Jeff already highlighted, just have it be known on the record that I would like to explore taking part of that 30% for a special project.
Okay, so, I think basically the staff knows that we're going to, Wendy?
Well, I agree. Hold on. I agree. I think that it would behoove us to take a look at that just to educate ourselves, because I also find that I'm not really well-educated on where we can attribute the funds. We're looking at all funds at this point, and so, just for us to be educated, even if we did wind up going forward with calling, you know, saying that, yes, we're going to earmark all of that for what we have been doing, but, I mean, I think we should all be educated about that. So, I'm in agreement that we should look at that and have a conversation so we know what we're going to be doing with that 30%, if it's still going to go into the general fund or if we want to be more targeted with that. So, I'm in support of that vein of conversation.
So, do you want to create a motion here, Wendy?
So, you've got a motion on the floor related to the work plan. I think I hear consensus from the council that you'd like to have a work session to better understand the range of possible uses of TLT and we can build that into your work session calendar without a motion.
Okay, can we go ahead with the motion on the table and just say, I need, all in favor of approving this business plan and budget for this year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, two opposed, Zach and Sal and all the others said aye. Okay.
Thank you. I would just put a request out that I would love to be a part of that work session. We work really, really hard in this realm and it would be, we would love the opportunity to come and explore investments in tourism-related facilities. At the end of the day, that's going to theoretically help what we're out to do, so I hope you guys are inviting us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Kylie Baer, please come and present to us, Classification and Compensation Analysis Update.
Members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. I am here to give you an update on the city's, I'm going to say it's our first comprehensive classification and compensation study. I'm super excited about this project. It is a large project and I want to give you a little bit of background about what a class and comp analysis really is, why it's important, what this project's going to look like for the city. I'm also requesting a little bit of policy guidance and then to let you know our next steps. So, a classification and compensation project is, it's a way to create a plan or a system that an organization uses to group its positions into categories. So, if you've looked on the city's website or on almost any other public entity's website, you'll see things like salary schedules and there's positions that are all grouped together. That's basically a classification plan. So, what we want to do is find a way to look at all of the different classifications that the city has, evaluate those objectively based on the major functions of the jobs and of the responsibilities that are held in each job, and then apply methodology to group those and then to add a compensation strategy with that. This will be kind of the first time we've overhauled all of our job descriptions. We do have job descriptions. A lot of places don't even have those. So, we have job descriptions already, but we're going to take a look at those objectively and make sure that we really analyze things like exempt versus non-exempt status, whether a position's safety sensitive, whether a position's responsible for driving, and then also to make sure that we have up-to-date essential functions of the jobs and minimum qualifications. These things are all really critical when we need to recruit for a position or when we need to accommodate somebody who might be experiencing a disability in the workplace. But one of the most important things about doing a classification and compensation project is that we have a consistent methodology and that we apply it across the board with all of our positions so that we're looking at things from a really objective lens. This work is critical. The city's not invested in this before and our strategic plan calls for it. One of our goals is to invest in the city's workforce and that's what a classification and compensation plan will do. We also need to comply with state law. The Oregon Equal Pay Act requires that employers in our state do an objective analysis on the compensation of all positions held within that organization. So, this will give us an opportunity to do that as well. And I'll get to this later on in my presentation. There will likely be a call for some increases in salary and wages. And I know that we're facing financial challenges and we're trying to balance all of these different, I guess, challenges that we have, but if we can't maintain competitive wages at the city of McMinnville, we're going to have a very hard time recruiting and retaining employees to perform all the services that we have here. So, this is really critical work. This slide outlines what this project is going to look like. There's about six different phases. We're going to have a project launch and a planning session. There will be a presentation with the council that will most likely be done via video from a consultant, and they'll kind of explain what our whole project is going to look like and give an overview of the scope. From that point, we'll do a classification study and that includes employee interviews and position description questionnaires. So, all of our employees will be asked to basically tell us exactly what they do. And from that information, we'll be able to go and kind of update those classifications and regroup them into the appropriate classification plan, which is part of the job evaluation study. Once that's done, our consultant will be doing salary surveys and at the same time, I will be performing an internal equity assessment because we'll have our positions grouped into those like and comparable categories. So, while I'm reviewing that, our consultant will go out and do salary surveys with similar typed employers and then provide a recommendation for us to update our classification and compensation plan. At the completion of that, we'll have an opportunity for appeals. So, if employees or their managers feel like we didn't get it right, they have an opportunity to come forward. That's documented and we'll review and make changes if we need to. At the completion of our project, we will have a final report as well as a presentation with employees and with the city council. This project is anticipated to take between six and eight months, so these are, these are not small projects. There's going to be two opportunities for changes in salary. One of those will come from the internal equity assessment that I will perform. That's to ensure that the city is compliant with Oregon's Equal Pay Act. During the, with the Oregon Equal Pay Act, there's about, I think it's eight different scenarios where pay could be different for work being performed of comparable character. Only a handful of those scenarios really apply to the city of McMinnville. We don't have a lot of travel for our employees. We don't have people that are working in very remote locations. We're all housed right here. So, there's really specific criteria that we need to pay attention to with regards to the Oregon Equal Pay Act. If we do see that there are differences or discrepancies in pay for work being performed of comparable character and we can't justify it, we'll need to increase the lower paid employee up to the higher paid employee. And in that event, we will likely come back to the council for guidance on how that might impact our budget. We're also going to be performing the salary survey, which is going to show how the city plays with all of our other competitive employers. As somebody who works in the profession of HR, I will tell you right now that some of our positions are lagging. There are positions that are not being paid up to market, but this survey is going to tell us from start to finish, every classification that we have, if we have discrepancies there. So, we're going to get a really comprehensive picture. Both of these two instances have the ability to impact the city's budget, so need to emphasize that. This project does have an impact on our city's resources as well, and there's a financial The project's going to cost between $70,000 and $80,000. Number's not locked down because we haven't finalized the scope yet. It's one thing I'm here to ask you for some guidance with. But then we have an unknown cost of the implementation of the project recommendations. Those recommendations, if they are really significant in cost, will probably warrant a multi-year approach in implementation. And we would be coming to the council with recommendations on how to make those implementations. There's also a significant impact on our staff time. Our consultant will be interviewing managers and employees to really get a good handle on what the work is that our staff perform. There's also a lot of time spent on those position description questionnaires. That's what each employee will fill out. And then we'll have time spent on the appeals process and that kind of just depends on how many appeals we might have. So, as I said, I do need some policy direction on what kind of data we would like to use for our compensation survey. We have an opportunity to look at public sector data only or we can look at public and private sector data as well. And there's positives and negatives associated with either of those. For the public sector data, it's typically readily available. If you go to search almost any city in the country, you'll be able to find compensation data and job descriptions for most positions. So, it's really easily accessible. If we were to use public and private sector data, it would cause us to have a customized survey that has an added cost, but it would give us information about our private competitors as well. One big difference that makes it kind of hard to compare public to private is the total compensation or total rewards. So, for public employers, there's often a pretty healthy contribution to a retirement plan. Our health insurance might vary from the private sector. On the private sector, they might have a totally different paid time off plan that doesn't compare to the way that we do it at the city. There could be stock options, there could be 401Ks, there could be things like vehicle allowances and whatnot. So, the total rewards or total compensation can be kind of tough to compare when you look between public and private. As I said a bit ago, the, using a customized salary survey increases our project cost by about $5,000. So, using public- So using public sector data only, it doesn't include that cost in there. So the recommendation from the city is to use public sector data, but we wanted to get that guidance from our council. So our next steps are to select our consultant. We've got about three that we've been looking at. We have proposals. They all have some positives. So we're just working to kind of figure out who's gonna work best for the city. Then we'll enter a contract and then we will launch. So we want to get rolling on this quickly and hopefully wrap it up by the end of the calendar year. Should be ideal. So I just want to leave you with this kind of mashup of our strategic plan. But in order for us to strengthen our ability to prioritize and deliver our services, we have to invest in our workforce and we have to pay people fairly for the work that they're performing. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you. I wanted to start off by saying I have potential conflict of interest as my lovely wife is a city employee who works at the McMinnville Public Library.
Noted.
Okay, hearing no objections. A couple of questions. One, thank you for the presentation. I enjoy seeing color on some of these slides for a change. My main question is, well, first off, will it also look at non-traditional benefit packages or non-traditional offerings to people? Or is it kind of mostly salary and dollar films?
We're mostly gonna be looking at salary and wages on this one.
Thank you.
Are the dollars to pay for this already in your current budget? Or are those additional dollars you'd be coming back for?
So we have budgeted some dollars right now to launch the project and then to wrap it up in the coming fiscal year.
Meaning that you've budgeted for the seventy to eighty thousand over the next two years, but not for any of the potential additional costs, including staff time and appeals and pay raises?
Yes.
And then what's the other driver for this other than the Oregon Equal Pay Act?
So this has been a project that's been promised to staff for a few years, maybe one and a half years. This is before I started, so I might be a little fuzzy in my dates. There had been a salary survey performed. It wasn't a comprehensive classification analysis. It was, I believe, mostly just a glance at the market with some salary adjustments made. I don't believe it was communicated very well with employees as it was happening. So ideally, as we do this project, the communication with staff is going to be really proactive and they're gonna understand exactly what a classification analysis really entails. So I think it's our chance to do it right.
I'm gonna tiptoe around this question a little bit, so bear with me as I try to ask it. So this will be comprehensive for all city staff, right? That's not the tiptoe one. Okay. So will, how to say this? Are there departments that could be excluded? For instance, if there are departments that already look at comparables as they review or revise their own contracts and are producing that type of information, would it be necessary to contract that out when both the council and those departments are regularly looking at comparables?
I'm also gonna try to tiptoe around something I don't know I'm tiptoeing around. But the reason that we want to do this in a comprehensive manner is that internal equity is very critical and that's part of that Oregon Equal Pay Act. So if we don't analyze all of our paid positions, we run a risk of making an error there. So we do want to include all of our positions.
So I just had a couple of questions for you. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to know with regards to requirements based on what the report produces, what are, is there required timeframe for implementation of whatever the results are? Like, we have no idea how much this is gonna impact the cost of the city. You mentioned doing it over a couple of years. What's state mandated with regards to how quickly we'd need to be able to respond?
So the only piece that would be state mandated is related to the Oregon Equal Pay Act. So if we do find that we have two employees performing work of comparable character, but they're being compensated differently and we can't justify that, we need to fix that immediately. As for the more like externally facing salary survey, it's up to the city on how we'd like to implement that, those recommendations.
So it's really, if there's two employees that are the same and they take into account the level of experience, how long they've been there, the same in those ways and one is compensated less than the other, then we would fix that right away. But other findings are not mandated by the state.
Correct.
Thank you.
Adam? Adam has a question.
Is there any retroactive pay that is mandated by the state?
So we would go back to January 1 of this year and that would only be for the Oregon Equal Pay Act if there was any discrepancies in that way. We have found a discrepancy already and made that update. It wasn't related to salary and wages. It was related to vacation accruals. So we had to go back and make an update.
Have you, I know other cities are going through the same process. Some of them are a little further along already than others. Of the ones that have done this, have we seen a significant change in their budgets as a result of it?
So I'm not, I don't have the total dollar amount. This was with the city of Portland. They're significantly larger than the city of McMinnville. But over 500 employees received pay increases as a result of that. It was in the millions of dollars to implement that recommendation, or that was by law. In Raleigh, North Carolina, another significantly larger city, I just met with their, it's like, I think she's an assistant city manager over administrative services. They did a classification compensation project and 2,100 employees received pay increases and that was in the millions of dollars to implement as well. In those cases, when the impact on the budget is significant like that, we will have to come to the council with some recommendations on how we go about implementing this. And I want to acknowledge that that is kind of scary. We don't know what those are right now. That's why we want to do this analysis and figure out where we stand.
Could I ask a question? In the past, when we did this, I thought we had something like a five-year phase in or something like that. Is that a possibility or not in this situation?
It would be a possibility if it was the recommendations based on the external market data. So anything outward looking, we can implement in whatever timeline seems to work best for the city. Anything between employees within the organization is what we would need to implement immediately.
Thank you.
I just have a clarifying question. You said about 500 employees in Portland? And about 10,000 or so? So 5% of their workforce?
They also had a bunch of pay freezes as well. A lot of their top, highly paid employees saw their pay frozen.
So what Portland did is they froze the pay for certain employees and then used some of that to...
And then let it catch up.
Got it. Thank you.
So you need some guidance in regard to whether to do a private-public or to just do public?
Yeah, we would need the guidance on if we want to use public sector data only or if we would like to look at public and private. The recommendation that was in the staff report was to do public only. But we wanted to give the council an opportunity to discuss that and ask any questions about it.
Okay, Zach, do you have some comments?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of moving forward with the survey and sticking with the public sector data for what we look at.
I also would be in favor of staying with the staff recommendation of public sector data only. Happy to expand, but I won't unless necessary.
I'm in favor of public sector only as well.
Okay, thank you. Adam?
Although I would concur that it's apples to oranges, public versus private, I would still like to, for the amount of money that we could be looking at in implementing this wage adjustment, I think spending the extra five thousand dollars is pennies compared to what it could be. So I would like to have that on the table.
I don't feel very strongly about it either way. I'll go with the staff recommendation.
Do we need a motion or anything for this? Okay, so you know how the majority feels.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much. Great presentation. We are now to the consent agenda and it's consideration of the minutes of April 9, 2019, the city council regular meeting. Would any counselor request to have an item removed from the consent agenda and heard at its regular place on the agenda? If not, I would request a motion and a second.
So moved.
Zach makes the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Remy seconds it. Okay, Zach moved and Remy seconded. Please, all in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please respond by saying nay. Okay, it's passed unanimously. Resolution number 2019-35. A resolution establishing revised sanitary sewer user fees, established a franchise fee for base water services, and repealing resolutions 2018-12 and 2019-8. Jeff, would you please present?
Thank you, council president. Thank you, council president, members of the council. In November, December of last year, the council reviewed the annual rate report, indicated, which indicated a 2.8% sewer increase to cover planned capital and operating costs. Based on recent conversations and direction from the council at the May 14 work session, the council directed bringing forward an action that would establish a franchise fee to provide stimulus money to assist with supporting projects and services for people without homes. In addition, we could have near-term symptoms related to negative conduct that need to be mitigated. The city also identified that a variety of available revenue streams were under consideration and would charge the city staff to bring back a proposal on utilization of those funds for a franchise fee at the council in June. The budget committee approved a budget, assuming council action on that franchise fee. At the pleasure of the council, we'll plan to present alternative revenues for you at the, during the initial conversation around the FY 1920 budget, there's a resolution in your packet that would increase the sewer fees by 7.8% and generate approximately $780,000 in revenue. $500,000 of the general fund for the franchise fee and $280,000 to the utility for planned capital improvements and operating costs. The recommendation is to approve the resolution that you have before you, which would also repeal earlier resolutions 2018-12 and 2019-8.
Okay, time for council discussion. Zach, looking in.
I think I'm currently sitting in favor of moving forward with this. As we've identified in many discussions, a need for additional revenues as our costs go up and our revenues can't keep pace due to a host of factors. Leaving the budget committee meeting with a great sense of having the declining reserves and as cities around us fail to have any balance in their reserves, I'm interested in having a discussion additionally around putting a section of this towards buttressing the reserves or bolstering the reserves specifically as well as other uses that the council finds appropriate. So I sit in favor of the resolution, but interested in having a discussion on where exactly the funds would go.
Remy?
I'm also in favor of the resolution. It was initially discussed to use this to support some affordable housing initiatives. We did discuss that at the Affordable Housing Task Force and made a list of uses, of ways in which we could use dollars that came into our committee, which included, but we're certainly not limited to, supporting some of our community partners, helping to fund and establish a regional homeless coordinator, which the city of Newburgh in this budget has already designated $140,000 for and which we already have a grant submitted to the Meyer Memorial Trust for as well. We also talked about land banking and three other initiatives that they don't have in front of me. Do you remember the five things that we designated, Heather? Supporting the regional homeless coordinator, land banking, supporting our community partners, our nonprofit community partners?
Competitive projects for affordable housing?
Pilot projects for affordable housing. That's what I heard her say. Okay, yes.
Competitive, right, competitive projects for affordable housing and...
Leverage for gap financing for projects.
Leverage for gap financing for projects.
Ditto.
Okay. Wendy?
I'm also in support. I think there's a real need for additional funds. We've seen it with regard to our declining reserves. We've seen it. We've heard a lot of people speak tonight about problems that we have with regards to homelessness in our community. We don't have any funds that we can allocate to that currently. I think that's probably one of our most critical potential uses for this new revenue stream at this time. So I think that it is something that we need to consider and I am in support of it at this time.
Thank you, Wendy. Adam?
With our declining reserves, I am open to additional revenue streams as far as this franchise fee goes. I personally have voiced before that I think money and revenue generated for people without homes should be coming from TLT because I see a direct correlation in line of as Airbnb's demand keeps rising, cheap rentals keep declining. So I would personally like, if we're gonna allocate money for that purpose, it to come out of part of our 30% general fund dollars of TLT. And if we're going to pass a franchise fee, be transparent about what it's for. If it's for increased reserves, then say that and own that. If it's for some other purpose, then be very transparent about it.
So?
We're having mic issues tonight. Yeah, I'm leaning in support of the 5% fee. I agree with Adam that we need to be clear about where the money's going. In particular, I do think some of it should be allocated to helping address the homelessness crisis that we're dealing with, both in terms of the impacts on residential neighborhoods and cleanup, as well as some of the actions that the police are going to have to take going forward. So, I think that's a good use of resources and leaning towards it.
Thank you, Sal. Okay, so we do have a motion. Jeff had read it off earlier. And it just basically deals with assessing the franchise fee and that some of the funds would be used for support of the homelessness. The second portion of that had to do with allowing the city staff and the Affordable Housing Committee to kind of go back, take a look at the situation, and come back to us later in June with how precisely we would be spending those funds. So, I'm asking, can we accept the motion as it currently stands?
So, just for clarity, those motions were passed at your May 14th meeting and presuming the council adopts the resolution that's before you tonight, we will proceed with the work that was already approved at your May 14th council meeting.
So, do I have a motion that approves that, please?
So move.
Remy moves. May I have a second? I guess I can second it. So, Remy moved. I seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Don't we have the discussion?
Oh, do we have a formal resolution? I apologize. Okay, my apologies. Resolution number 2019-35, resolution establishing revised sanitary sewer user fees, establishing franchise fees for wastewater services and repealing resolutions 2018-12 and 2019-08. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, Remy moves. Do I have a second? I can second it. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Am I okay? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Do we have discussion after the motion?
Well, we have been discussing it. Do we need more discussion?
I think there's some...
I think there's some... I have a question anyway.
Okay.
About at what point we have... It sounds like when even passing it now, we will have some very... An opportunity to have conversations about specifically how it will be allocated during budgeting?
Yes.
And so...
Budgeting is still open until the end of June.
So, the concern's addressed about making sure we have... That will be addressed during that process?
Yes, it will.
So, the motion that the budget committee made in approving the budget was to place the revenue in... Was to budget the revenue and to place the expense in contingency that was subject to council decision at a subsequent meeting. And so, you may have enough information to make that decision at your June budget hearing. You may decide that it takes a little bit longer to come to conclusion about how you want to spend that money. It will stay in contingency until we have clear council direction about how you want to utilize those funds.
I have a point of order question.
Yes, what?
So, this is the first reading?
No, it's a resolution. Okay, so any further discussion, questions?
I'm sensing from some folks on the council that maybe before we vote on this, that we'd like to see a little more clarity in terms of how the money is going to be spent and if that... That would make me feel more comfortable about getting to yes tonight.
The discussion at the last meeting was that we would allow staff to have some time to put this together for us. But we were in agreement that we all thought the sewer to increase the percentage was appropriate.
I guess I'm asking why we can't vote on this when the staff has the full report?
So, you can vote on it whenever you choose to. That's your policy discretion. It takes 30 days to establish a franchise fee. And so, if you choose to take action now, the fee increase and franchise fee will go into effect July 1. If you wait to a subsequent date, the effective date of both the franchise fee and the fee increase will be delayed. It will have a revenue impact. The presentation of the budget committee indicated that there are a lot of competing interests. We've heard some of those voiced here. If the council wants to approve a specific spending plan before you implement the fee increase and franchise fee, you certainly have the ability to do that. We're just acting on the direction that we got from the council two weeks ago.
No. Public comment period is over. Mike?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify my... We have a fee resolution already in place. So, we adopted a resolution in early 2019 that put in place the 2.8% rate increase July 1. And so, if you don't take action tonight, that's still in place. And I ask that if we want to delay, that we consider the impact of Water and Light and the impact on their billing, that it does take time for them to make changes. So, it may be prudent to repeal that rate resolution that goes into effect July 1 and delay that rate increase until such time you move them at the same time. I'd be worried about the billing impact on Water and Light and doing too rapid changes to their billing system.
I'm sorry, I'm struggling with the disconnect that there are a lot... There's not enough operational money that generally, and multiple times now, the council has given direction that this is a means of bringing enough money into the city, or not enough money, but more money into the city in a way that is equitably distributed among citizens and that there was an advanced understanding that while we have different desires of places for those dollars to go, that that would be worked out in the budget process. So, I'm confused as to why at this time we seem to be running into a wall and perhaps the councillors that are sensing that wall could clarify for me why they would like to stop from moving forward at this point.
Yeah, I guess I am puzzled too because you all just now went through and said you were generally in favor of assessing the rate and you'll have an opportunity down the road to determine how the funds will be spent. So, why is there concern about this?
I can just address, I wanted to have a discussion because I wanted my question answered. I think that it's, without a doubt, we need the funds and so I'm in support of voting for it tonight. And my question was answered with regards to when the conversation would happen, with regards to exactly how the funds were allocated, to address the concerns of the other councillors and myself included, to make sure that we're being clear with the public about how those funds will be used. But I'm in favor of voting for it tonight as well. I think there's no doubt that the funds are needed. It's how the funds will be allocated.
Others?
I, just to respond to Remy's question, I just feel like a half a million dollars is a lot of money. I'm supportive of doing that for a variety of reasons. I just had to respond to Remy's question. I am in favor of allocating money to address this. I'm not saying that I'm not. I just am trying to make the point that it would be helpful, I think, for me or just for one of my colleagues to my left, that we have better clarity about how the money is going to be spent before we make the decision to allocate it.
Even though you know that you will have final say in how it will be spent?
I'm not going to respond to that. I think there's been enough cases on the council where I feel like we're given decisions on a timeframe where we have very little real say in kind of stopping the decision if it's going forward. It's very difficult to stop a moving train once it's moving. And I found that to be the case on a few different occasions. So, that's the reason for the concern. It's not saying that we shouldn't do it. It's not even saying that we shouldn't vote on it tonight, but I think it's worth having a conversation. I guess I don't really feel like I should have to apologize for saying that we should be thinking about how we're going to spend this money before we make a decision.
I totally agree. And so, it wouldn't be allocated. It would just stay in contingency. It's just an option to budget it at this point in time.
Please, sir, that's... The public comment is over. It's not appropriate.
Well, I'll put it out there one more time. Do we have a motion? Okay, and I have a motion and a second. Adam, do you have one more comment?
But I'm not opposed to our need for revenue. I just think that if we are going to get revenue from citizens across the board, we need to do that at the same time we say what we're spinning that revenue on. I get that we have the opportunity to make that decision down the road, but I don't want to put the cart before the horse. So, for me, tonight, it would be a no.
I would greatly appreciate it if you would curb your enthusiasm. Okay, we have a motion before us. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is that three or four? Please, all those against this, please indicate by saying nay. So, the motion fails.
I did not vote.
I didn't think you did.
I did not vote. It's three to two.
So, are you abstaining?
An abstention would be enough.
All right, so the motion fails.
Sal has decided.
I would have preferred to have the conversation about this this week, have some time to think about it and vote on it at the next meeting. I'm mindful of Mike's comments that this affects billing at Water and Light. And I do think ultimately I'm going to get to yes on this, so I'm going to go yes.
Okay, so motion passes. Four in favor and two against. Okay, first reading impossible, second reading of ordinance number 5,064. We will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5,64. Okay, does any councillor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5,064, an ordinance relating to camping within the city of McMinnville, amending McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 8.36.
Police Chief Matt Skills, I see you're in position. Please present.
What a long night. Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, I think we all know what the staff report has said and I want to thank you for your consideration. As you may recall, in our May 14th work session, we had lengthy discussions surrounding the topic of homelessness. One of the topics discussed was the impact of homelessness and homeless camping in the public right-ofway. During the course of the work session, you heard from key members of the staff, city manager, city attorney, myself, department heads. Public right-ofway camping has been a problem impacting our citizens, public safety, public works, public health, private nonprofits, private businesses, and entities such as Mack Water and Light. I refer you back to the staff report from the 14th surrounding the current legal hurdles that we faced back probably August, September of last year, shortly after ordinance 5057 was passed. That had to do with car camping, regulating car camping programs. At that time, obviously, the Ninth Circuit ruling impacted our ability to enforce that current code without violating some issues that the Ninth Circuit had come up, that we had come up against with respect to camping, or excuse me, sheltering. At the conclusion of that work session, you directed staff to return to the next council session, which is obviously today, with an ordinance updating Municipal Code 8.36, one that would be modeled after the city of Vancouver, Washington. In addition, you asked at that point for staff to possibly update other locations or protect other locations within the city at all time. Staff has completed an ordinance amending McMinnville Municipal Code 8.36, taking into consideration your recommendations. There'll probably be obviously some discussion that you want to have. As referenced above, the code as written or proposed tonight allows for camping on the public right-ofway during the times of 9:30 PM to 6:30 AM. And between the hours of 6:30 AM and 9:30 PM, no public right-ofway camping to include vehicles will be allowed. In addition, the storage of property to include camp facilities other than vehicles will not be allowed under McMinnville Code. In essence, you may camp on the public right-ofway during the allowed times and in the approved areas. However, after that time, you must remove your property from public property or the public right-ofway. Discussions remains with respect to the outright prohibition of camping in the urban renewal area. That's an area that we've all identified, you have identified, as an area that the city is significantly invested in, as well as residential areas within the city of McMinnville. Staff's prepared Municipal Code to prohibit camping right now in those areas to protect against the creation of blighted conditions and protect significant investments. As I mentioned, that's already been made for that improvement. So, as you can see, you've got an ordinance amendment before you and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, let's start with this end. Adam?
At this point, I don't have any questions, but I will in a little bit.
Thanks, chief. So, as respect to the large camping congregations that we have in town, can you kind of step me through what that enforcement is going to look like? Let's say we pass the ordinance on an emergency basis. What does the next 30 to 45 days look like for your department?
You bet. So, as the ordinance was written today, it did not put an emergency clause in there. It allows for a 30-day essentially window. During that 30-day window, that's when ourselves, our county partners, our public, or excuse me, our private nonprofits such as YCAP, other locals that we continually work with, will be out doing outreach, informing the populations in these areas such as Dustin Court, Marshaling, Fourth and Adams about the upcoming code coming into existence. So, there's going to be a great deal of partnering with our public and private partners to roll this out effectively and to provide people with time to make plans to figure out how they're going to proceed. So, again, that 30-day window will allow us for the education outreach, hopefully gaining that compliance piece.
So, at the end of 30 days, the ordinance takes effect. You've done 30 days' worth of outreach. Hopefully, some people have moved on, but probably not everybody. So, what happens at the end of 30 days?
Well, at the end of 30 days, and the ordinance does become effective, persons obviously will be contacted by our staff, by our officers, advised again to move. And if they choose not to move, that would be their choice. And if that choice is, they would be in violation of Municipal Code 8.36 with respect to prohibited camping. That's a C misdemeanor as outlined in the ordinance that's proposed before you.
So, what is the penalty for the C category misdemeanor?
I believe it's 30 days and, correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, 30 days is the maximum amount of term of imprisonment.
And in your report that you gave us, not for this meeting, the previous one, you indicated that there might be arrests and seizure of property. and seizure of property and that kind of thing. Does the current ordinance give you the full authority that you need in order to basically take control of the city streets?
Are you talking about the one that's as proposed right now in front of you?
Yeah, what we're considering.
My discussions with staff, my discussions with council, my discussion with other city departments that will be impacted is yes, this does move the needle. So, yes, it will give us the ability to take appropriate, have appropriate response to those that choose not to comply with the ordinance.
So, at the point where, if this passes tonight, at the point where we pass it, you will feel like you've gotten the direction from the council to do what you need, and you'll have the tools that you need to do it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Adam, do you have questions yet?
Uh, no.
Okay. Moving down to Zach.
No questions. Thanks for the well-written document. It's exactly what we asked for, to be lined up.
I might add that 8.36 does not amend or do anything to the council's temporary camping program, the dusted-on stuff that we've talked about earlier tonight and throughout the previous year.
Remy or Wendy, either one?
So, my first question is, Chief, perhaps for you or perhaps for our city attorney. As you know, from some conversation we had when I was reading about the Vancouver ordinance that was enacted in 2015, I saw that Vancouver tried to basically undo their own ordinance in 2017. They said, the news article reported that it really wasn't working for them as a city, and now they were taking a new step to decriminalize homelessness. And then, of course, that all predated the recent Ninth Circuit decision, which has largely informed the action or, I think it would be fair to say, lack of available action that your department has been able to take. So, I guess my question is, since this ordinance was enacted in Vancouver in 2015 before the Ninth Circuit decision, has it been contested in Vancouver? Has anybody challenged it in Vancouver? I'm asking from the position of what we're, the reason we're not enforcing our ordinance as it's written right now is to make sure we don't violate the Ninth Circuit Court decision. So, has this other ordinance been tested in the same way?
Are you saying tested is the same way as the Boise decision? Or are you saying tested? My knowledge, it has not been tested. It is something, as we discussed one-on-one, is that there was discussion back in 2017 about the decriminalization. They opted to stay with the ordinance as written, and they have not had. In fact, again, Captain Jasco did an extensive amount of work and research with this, is that this is the mechanism with which they're utilizing, and it has been effective. You know, you're never going to see 100% compliance by citizenry. I think that would be, I don't think that'd be at all to be expected. But, the fact of the matter is, is that I think that this ordinance, as you're seeing today, has been on the books since 2015. It's been utilized up in Vancouver. They chose to stay the course, and it's currently the manner in which they're enforcing their camping, their camping issues up there.
So, you feel confident that the city couldn't be persecuted or sued for enforcing this rewritten version of the ordinance? Because that's why we're not currently enforcing the ordinance we have on the books, because we could potentially be sued for that. So...
That's correct. But, under our former ordinance, it was not allowed at all. It was prohibited throughout. I think that the Vancouver model allows it in specific areas during specific times, which is the leap that we need to make for the Ninth Circuit, in my opinion. And I'm not going to go off of, I'm not going to put the city attorney on the spot. I think there's always risk for exposure. I certainly think that this has been in the works or been used for four years up in Vancouver. And again, they stayed with it.
David, do you feel the same way that this makes us risk adverse from that potential?
So, I will always tell you that anybody can sue anybody for anything. And so, nothing that we do here is going to prevent us from potentially getting sued. The question is whether we can prevail in that lawsuit. Counsel, recall that in discussions that we've had, we talked about the fact that the courts allow reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions to be placed on activities. One of the problems that we had with the prior ordinance is that there were no, it was a blanket ordinance, all times, all public places. So, what we've got here are time and place restrictions that are not uncommon. Other jurisdictions have different time restrictions in place. And so, what we have here is something that we believe sets reasonable time restrictions on this activity. And then, in terms of place restrictions, there are certain areas in the city where it is prohibited at all hours of the day. That includes parks, residential areas, areas within the urban renewal district, and publicly owned and maintained parking lots such as the parking garage. But it's, sorry, I wasn't in on the joke. But it doesn't prohibit it in all locations in the city. So, that's where we're trying to get at, what the court has outlined as reasonable place restrictions. And so, based on that, I think we've got as good an argument as any that what the city is doing here fits within the guidelines that have been set by the court, not just in the Boise case, but in cases involving cities all over the West Coast and the country, including Los Angeles and San Diego and San Francisco and Corales and Portland and Seattle. And we're trying to follow the guidance that the courts have set out in those myriad of cases and come up with a decision that's not going to consume the entire half a million dollars in franchise fees on legal fees.
Okay, thanks. I just have one clarifying question, if I could. So, and this is apropos of the low-barrier shelter conversation that we've had. So, my understanding is if we wanted to have a citywide ordinance that had an absolute ban in city camping, if we had adequate low-barrier shelter space, we could have that ordinance and enforce it citywide as well. Is that correct?
So, if you look at the court's advice, again, not just in the Boise case, but in other cases, they talk about the Eighth Amendment prohibiting the criminalization of the unavoidable consequences of somebody being homeless. So, sleeping is a necessary life activity. You cannot criminalize somebody from sleeping in a public place if they have no home to go to. But, if somebody has a choice of a location to go to, and it doesn't violate the First Amendment, Establishment Clause related to religion, then if somebody is making a choice to be on the street as opposed to choosing to be at a shelter that they personally have available to them, then you can take criminal enforcement action against the individual for making that choice. What the court does not allow is for you to punish somebody criminally for engaging in activity when they don't have any choice, but to engage in that activity in a public setting because of the fact that they have no or alternative location to be.
So, Sally, I'm glad you asked that question because it kind of gets at part of my confusion with this, which is the ordinance that I worked with, many of our department heads so hard to push through, which is the existing ordinance, 5057, actually does prohibit camping in all public right-of-way. And that would have been enforceable were it not for this Ninth Circuit decision. And so, while there seems to be a lot of... So, the changes now would actually allow camping in the public right-of-way. So, this is, I guess, you know, my thinking is that when I hear that our current ordinances aren't enforceable because we don't have adequate shelter space or options for people, places for people to go, my thinking lends towards, well, then, how do we make our current ordinances enforceable? As opposed to changing our ordinance to allow the very thing which is being so broadly contested, which is sleeping in the public right-of-way. And passage of this ordinance allows for sleeping in the public right-of-way. I heard some commentary earlier tonight related to this saying, you know, if we listen to what business owners in our wards wanted. And I did call business owners in my ward and talk to them. And they told me very clearly they want equitable enforcement of our laws, and they want our laws to be enforced. And of course, that's kind of the problem that's brought us here today, is we've not been able to enforce our laws. So, you know, then, as we move into this question of changing the laws, we're advised that if we're going to add some of these other parameters to this, there has to be reasonable time and place. And also, we were advised before that any decision has to be considered humane. And that's what will make any ordinance enforceable, is if it's viewed to be humane. So, and that kind of brings me back to some of the other commentary we heard earlier about timeframes. And as we go back to some of the data that we have about our homeless population, knowing that they're largely young, they're largely youth, when I think about having to, that concept of having to get your kids up and ready and on the move by 6:30 in the morning with no nearby bathroom facilities, you know, anybody that has had the experience of trying to get kids going in the morning knows that that will be a challenge, and a challenge especially if it would have to be done seven days a week. So, that makes me question, is this a reasonable time in the rewriting of this? Let me go back to some questions. So, if this ordinance were to pass, and people are, have to vacate the area they're in by 6:30 in the morning, what will happen with the, who will be responsible for all the debris and whatnot that will get left behind?
So, they'll be given the opportunity to take that with them. If the stuff, if their property is left behind, it's tagged, and it will be taken into police property. All right? And they will have the ability to get it out, if it is personal belongings that is of value. But if it's simply garbage that's left behind, that will be incumbent upon our use of ecology, public works, our own staff. On Friday, I had a captain and a sergeant picking up a truck bed of garbage from Fourth and Adams. So, it will get done. And it will be done by, I'm assuming, a multitude of people or a multitude of entities that will work together to come up with plans in the next 30 days to ensure that that does happen.
Do you have concerns, or I guess I could premise it by saying I have concerns, and I voiced them at our last meeting, that, you know, the, that your, your department's job is not to pick up after people? And I think inevitably, things will get left behind. I'm not talking about personal possessions. I'm talking about garbage and other debris. And then, because this is allowed throughout the city, you know, these will be kind of unpredictably, this garbage will be unpredictably kind of spread out through the city. And so, how do you see, how is it not going to become the role of your, how do we stand up for our police department so that our police department isn't taking on the job of picking up other people's trash?
Well, I think it, not only, we're public servants, and we understand our role is to just do it. So, and I would echo, that's not the public safety's primary focus, is to pick up garbage. We'll obviously ask the public for assistance. You know, if they see some garbage sitting in front of a business or a resident, not in a residential area, but in front of a business and industrial area, that they assist us. But ultimately, if garbage is left behind, it's incumbent upon ourselves, ecology, public works, whoever it might be to assist in ensuring that that space is cleaned up. I can't give you, you know, a plan that says every piece of garbage is going to be picked up. If we find garbage, I'm guaranteeing you we'll work with our partners to ensure it's picked up. The issues that we're seeing right now is the sustained camping in areas where garbage is piling up. Again, a pickup bed worth of garbage from about six tents at Fourth and Adams. I would anticipate the amount of garbage being left behind reducing because they're not in that area all the time, 24/7. Candidly.
And do you think that, so, let's take another one of the problem areas, right? So, Dustin Court and Marsh Lane, or even Fourth Street. There would be nothing to stop people from returning to those same areas every night?
Fourth and Adams is in the urban renewal area.
Okay, thank you.
No, to Dustin and Marsh. Assumedly, you know, I know the fire chief is working with Public Works ourselves for striping of fire lanes down the west side of both Dustin and Marsh. I think that area, that the use of that area is significantly reduced with that. But yes, they will return. If they choose to return to that area, yeah, they will be allowed to park there.
Okay. Do you think that that will then satisfy some of the people that have spoken so clearly to us about their dissatisfaction, especially people that are property owners and business owners in that area? If I may, if, I don't know if Dean is still here, but if people are still sleeping on the side of his property every night and leaving debris every morning, do you feel that that'll satisfy his concern?
Well, I don't want to speak for Dean, again. So, I will leave that to him. You could certainly ask him. I know in my conversations with Dean and other business owners is they would, and our residents, is they want the needle to be moved no matter how much in respect to the long-term issues that we're seeing from the impact of the homeless.
And do you think that doing this as opposed to providing what I would call proactive solutions, which would be giving people places where they could go? Or, instead of storing people's things once they've left behind, if you're already budgeting to, and I'm not proposing this as an idea. This isn't something that the council's considering. But as an example, instead of spending the dollars on a storage facility that you mentioned where people's things will be stored for 30 days, if those monies were to be spent proactively in allowing people to check in things while they went to work, which is something that's also done in a lot of cities, we're spending the same resources to give people options so that our current ordinance is enforceable. Do you feel that it's better to change the ordinance than to make our current ordinance enforceable?
Yes, because, again, right now, as our current ordinance is written, we do not satisfy time, place, manner. We don't... We don't satisfy, we outright ban it. This is a needle mover. It's, although, I think it, I think it does more, I think it does things for our business community and our residents that are impacted every day. So candidly, yes, I think this gets the job done. And I'm not saying, I honestly think that the long-term solutions that this council's thoughtfully discussed for two, three years now, I think those need to continue. But with this other avenue with which we have tools that your public, your public safety department has the ability to use and ensure that, you know, sewage isn't dripping out of RVs for, you know, seven days, or that, you know, trash isn't piling up, or that urine-soaked clothes aren't discarded on the side of the road, you know? So I think they're in tandem. It's in conjunction.
Okay, the hour is getting late. We're getting close to 10 o'clock.
Just one more question, if I may.
Very brief.
Enforcement, yeah. So in the current ordinance, it says it's a, the enforcement portion is a Class C misdemeanor, but in the rewriting, I saw that it was also a Class C misdemeanor. Am I interpreting that incorrectly?
So, you want to speak on, I think the violation piece is...
Yeah, so the Class C violation is different than a Class C misdemeanor. A violation is a noncriminal offense in the sense that there's no jail time associated with it, it's simply a financial penalty, and that provides, that particular provision applies only to the safe overnight camping program. So persons violating the provision to the safe overnight camping program upon conviction could be found guilty of a violation, which includes a monetary fine. The Class C misdemeanor relates to the, any violation of the prohibited camping section of the ordinance, and that would be a criminal offense as written. With the, the Class C misdemeanor is jail up to 30 days and a fine up to $1,250.
That's correct.
Upon conviction.
Okay. Wendy, do you have a quick question?
Yeah. Thank you, Chief Scales, for this ordinance. I know it's been a lot of work to get it to us, and it's really well-written and thoughtful. I am in strong support of it. I think we haven't given you and your team what you need to enforce the behaviors that will protect all of our citizens. I think it's necessary that we do this. I think it's really well-written. I also agree with you that the work that we're doing for the long-term solutions, we need to continue to do that work, low-barrier shelters, getting affordable housing and moving, but in the short term, we're having issues that you're addressing with this. So thank you so much. My only one question is, can you just describe what it will look like? I can picture what it's going to look like with regards to tents that people can pack up and move and leave stuff behind. With regards to RVs, specifically with regards to how this ordinance is written, what will it look like?
RVs will be told to move if they're in a residential area, and we can identify that people are actually living slash camping out of them. If they refuse to leave, the person could be arrested, they could go to jail, and their RV could be impounded.
Thank you. Sal, please.
No.
Are you ready?
Thanks.
Okay, Adam?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, great. So I need a motion to pass ordinance number 5064 to a second reading.
So moved, second.
Okay, Adam moved and Sal seconded, or vice versa? Okay, Sal moved and Adam seconded. Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that's unanimous. Any nays, please indicate by saying nay. Okay, ordinance number 5064 passes by a vote of six, oh, I'm sorry, first reading, okay. Where am I at?
Yeah.
Okay. 54 passes in the first reading unanimously. I will now ask the City Attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5064, an ordinance relating to camping within the city of McMenville, amending McMenville Municipal Code, Chapter 8.36.
Okay, may I ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5064? So moved.
Second.
Wendy and Adam, okay. State, okay. City Recorder, will you please poll the council?
I'll abstain.
Counselor Gary?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Peralta?
Hi.
Counselor Stossen?
Aye.
So we have five voted in favor and one abstention. Okay, so ordinance number 5064 is adopted by a vote of five to one abstention. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your interest and enthusiasm. We are adjourned.